Good evening and welcome to the December 3rd City of Half Moon Bay City Council Meeting. Roll call, please.
Councilmember Cappiano?
Here.
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 Vice Mayor Lowell?
Here.
And Mayor Cottrell?
Here, please join me in the pledge. And I don't know what we did, but our sound system sounds really, really good. So, thank you for all that effort. I'm sure that went into that.
It's you.
It's probably my performance at the mic. So, welcome, everybody. Thank you for coming this evening. And I'd like to move to the first item, which is Proclamations and Presentations. And the first is the introduction of the interim Sewer Authority General Manager for SAM, Ms. Vivian Hausen. She's been -- well, she can -- please, if you come to the mic and share a little bit about yourself. But Alan and I work on the SAM board and work with the other districts on the coast side. And Vivian has been aboard for, I think, several months now. And we're big fans. We think you're doing a great job. But please, I'd love you to introduce yourself to our council and our community.
Thank you, Mayor Kowalczek and members of the council. My name is Vivian Hausen, and I am very happy to be here. In these assignments, you never know what you're going to step into. And I always come with all my, you know, my guard up. But this has been a great agency. SAM is a great agency. Good people, very well-meaning. So, I just hope I can stick around long enough to make a difference. And I feel that already we're changing as an agency for the better. And not that it was bad, but there's always room for improvement. So, very happy to be here and look forward to working with all of you.
Thank you. And if there's any questions for the council, but I have a -- from the council, or comments, but I have a couple of comments. One, I just want to highlight a couple of things that we've done just as a board with Vivian's assistance. So, Alan and I took a tour of all the SAM assets along the coast, and it was eye-opening. And some of the things that we discussed were also eye-opening. For example, when discussing a potential issue and how to address it, the response and direction or suggestion was, "Well, why don't we model it before we spend money on it?" I go, "Well, that's a heck of an idea." And really smart thinking brought to the table, but helping us get a firsthand understanding of the SAM assets in play and their condition and how we're approaching capital improvement and maintenance was really smart and an example of something that we just did right away at your initiation, and we appreciate that.
Yes, Vivian, thank you for serving our community for a while here because it's very important. And we do have some experience together at Waterboard World. And I can tell you, she's had some very, very challenging JPAs and districts to work with that have had some major violations that everyone's working their way through. But I thank you for all the good work for the environment and for the wastewater industry. And I think we're very lucky to have you here to kind of get us to the next level. So, thank you. Good seeing you.
Vivian, I really want to thank you for all you've done for SAM. It's been a real breath of fresh air. The way things are approached, the way problems are looked at, it's really, I think, what Rick and I have been looking for, for the last several years, especially after we were given this death sentence of being put over on SAM. Everybody's, "Oh, you'll love this." And it was difficult at first, but I think a couple of things have happened. One, we've really reached out to the other members and let them know we're there to work together. We just want to improve SAM. But then the second part was then getting yourself on board. Like I said, really has, I think, changed the atmosphere into a more positive direction of getting SAM where it needs to be. And I know for the people out there that, you know, like, "What's SAM?", you know, nobody cares until your sewer doesn't work, your toilet doesn't flush. But it's a big deal. And as John mentioned, when you're faced with fines, they're not $5,000 or $10,000. They're extremely significant fines. So, the reality is by looking carefully at your infrastructure and spending money on it and avoiding fines is really the smartest direction to go. So, again, thank you very much, and I'm looking forward to seeing SAM continue on a positive note.
I agree, and thank you. And when we have our full-time general manager, I know that they're going to benefit from the leadership that you've brought to the table. So, thanks for that. Appreciate it.
Thanks very much.
Next item is a presentation, the annual report from the Half Moon Bay Library. Hi, Annie.
Hi, thanks so much for having me. My name is Annie Mally, and I'm the Branch Manager of the Half Moon Bay Library. I'm just going to highlight some of the new programs that we offered during the year and just highlight some of the numbers that have gone on at the library. So, go ahead, next slide. I love numbers, so I always start with our numbers. And so, you can see the library's been really, really busy over the year. 180,000 visits to the library, 328,000 items loaned, 16,000 questions answered, 25,000 people attending programs in that small facility, and 26,000 hours of computer access. So, it's always a bustling place. Some of the new services that we offered, so we offered an iPhone app. So, whether you're on Android or Apple, we have an app that you can download. It allows you to search for books, movies, music. You can download eBooks and audiobooks using the app. You can also manage your library account. So, that's a way of taking the library with you wherever you are. E-magazines, that's been really popular. That started a few months ago. We have over 100 popular magazines available. What's great with the e-magazines is that there's no waiting, and they never go away. So, you don't have to worry about late fees or -- we have, an interesting aside, The Economist is the most popular magazine title. So, not sure what that says about our community. But anyway, so that's a new resource. And you can use it on your iPad, Kindle, Nexus, Fire, whichever you have, or on your computer. So, that's a great resource. We just opened downloadable music. That started a couple of weeks ago. They don't have streaming available yet, but you can still sort of go from song to song. It allows you to download over 3 million songs from 10,000 different record labels. And it's kind of a different approach where you can download three titles every week, and then you get to keep them forever. So, you can just add these titles to your music library. And it's a pretty good selection. It's some really popular stuff that you may or may not want to listen to, and then classics and just a wide variety of music. So, that's something new. And streaming supposedly is supposed to happen in the next week or so. And then eBooks. We just continue to add eBooks because they are so popular. So, right now, we have over 32,000 eBooks available. We get them from a variety of different vendors to give us that sort of selection. So, 94,000 eBooks were downloaded last year throughout the county. 6,830 were downloaded locally. And that just, every year, it just keeps becoming more and more popular, and we just keep adding more eBooks. So, programs. So, that's what we do a lot at the library. People come to the library as a destination, a place to be with their neighbors, to -- right now, we have a gluten-free cooking, holiday baking program at the library right now. So, we always offer a wide variety of programs. So, last year, it was 737 programs during the year. So, that means we're offering multiple programs a day. Some days, it's a little crazy where we may have five or six. So, 25,000 people attended programs. We offer weekly programs, crafts, Legos, teens. Many of these programs are funded by the Friends of the Half Moon Bay Library. So, next slide. So, it's just a variety teen poetry contest, salsa tasting. We had a towns hall with Jackie Speer, which over 100 people came to. Day of the Dead celebration, quilter's trunk show, pumpkin festival costume contest, computer classes, health and wellness programs with New Leaf, storytellers, illustrators, magicians, musicians, puppets, you name it, we offer it at the library. Summer reading is very popular. So, summer at the library, and all of those programs are funded by the Friends of the library. The theme was "Reading is So Delicious" this past summer. So, we offered some healthy cooking classes and some not-so-healthy cooking classes. We tried to bring a balance of programs. And then we had 887 people participate in summer reading and 683 people finished. So, they did all the required reading that was necessary during the summer. So, that's a really good number. Storytimes, what you traditionally think of with the library. So, we offered 301 storytimes. 9,248 people attended the storytimes. So, we offer six per week. School outreach, we work with all the local schools. We met with 4,736 students. Read for the Record was our biggest day. We met with 714 students and read Otis, a book about a tractor, which was appropriate for our community all in one day. So, we were all over the coast reading Otis. Day of the Dead, we had 735 students come to the library over a two-day period. And then the Friends of the library were generous to offer, to pay for authors to visit some of the local schools. So, this year, we had Matt De La Peña, Jose Luis Orozco, Viola Canales, Laura Risa, and Mac Barnett, who came just a couple of weeks ago. Literacy services, we have 41 volunteer tutors who work with 47 students and helping them with their English reading skills. We just had a woman who completed her GED a couple of weeks ago. So, that's really exciting. And then her next task is to put together a resume, and then she's going to start looking for another job. But we have people who want to help, need help with reading so they can help their children with homework, people who need to get their driver's license, just a sort of a variety of things. This is one of our favorite times of year. Food for Fines is going on right now. Last year, we collected over 5,000 pounds of food. That all went to Coastside Hope. So, it's a great opportunity for people who have fines or fees to come and get them waived by bringing in cans or boxes or bags of food. And we are always, we have the most generous patrons countywide in that Half Moon Bay always collects the most food during Food for Fines. And then we couldn't do a lot of what we do without our volunteers. So, we have 65 active volunteers who contributed over 4,403 hours during last year, and they do everything: tutoring, craft programs, musicians, storytime, help with collection support. And then we have the Friends of the Half Moon Bay Library, who are a nonprofit that supports and funds library programs at the library. And a lot of what we do, all the children's programs, all summer reading, is paid for by the Friends and all the fundraising they do to make that happen. So, now I would like to bring up the co-presidents of the Friends of the Half Moon Bay Library, Julie Mel and Hope Atmore, and they're going to tell you a little bit more about the Friends of the library.
Thank you, Annie. Thank you, Mayor Kowalczek and councilmembers, for giving the Friends of the library an opportunity to speak to you this evening. The Friends is a nonprofit group that has supported and funded programs offered at our library since the 1980s. Our members are firm believers that our library is a vital resource to our community, and our primary goal over the years has been to enhance the programs at the library. As many here know, our library was built in 1971 and originally served a population of about 4,300. Since then, the population served has grown to about 29,000, and that number is expected to increase to 36,000 by 2020. That is just six years away. At 7,800 square feet, our library is not adequate to meet the needs of our current population, and the space issues are only going to get worse. We need a library that serves its citizens in the unique and changing ways that only a public space can: meeting and conference rooms, program rooms, computer and technology labs, a children's space, a teen's space, and a quiet room that actually stays quiet. And there could even be a suitable room for city council meetings. 13 months ago, Julie Mel and I spoke before the council as concerned citizens about our community's need for a larger library. Now, like then, we and the council are all in agreement that a new library is of utmost importance to the coast side. Since that time, Julie and I were elected to share the position of President of the Friends of the library. Along with other board members, new and old, the Friends has been re-energized, increasing membership, and reigniting the goal of a new, bigger, and modern library for our town. During our 2011-2012 fiscal year, the Friends raised a little over $12,000 for program funding for our library. But in the last two months alone, we've already raised $11,000 for programs, but also because we are harnessing the citizen's desire for a new library. We have momentum, our membership is growing, and we will continue to be an ever-stronger voice for the community. However, our group can only do so much. We need the city to act with us. It is critical that the City of Half Moon Bay secure the Measure A funds that will enable the city to move forward with a new needs assessment and a redevelopment of plans. Our window to secure those funds is rapidly closing, and only the council and city have the power to move the project forward at this point. We truly appreciate your time and support for this project. The Friends will continue to advocate for the needs of the community, and we look forward to partnering with the city and county as we approach the financing and planning of a new library. Because the county has committed to covering half of the cost of a new library, we are in a unique position and should work together efficiently to bring a bigger, better, and state-of-the-art library to Half Moon Bay. The Friends would also like to form an advisory committee and invite a member of the city council to work with us to help move this project forward. Thank you for giving us the time to speak on behalf of the Friends. We appreciate your ongoing public support for a new library and look forward to working with you to make that a reality. Thank you.
Thank you very much. And I have a lot of comments, but I offered to the council comments, questions for our presenters.
Thank you. You spoke very well about all the activity of the Friends, and it's been great. You certainly have energized the group, and it's been wonderful, the outings we've had over at the farmer's market and specifically -- oh, Wendy's back there, too. Specifically, the last book sale with the sip and sort we had, that was a great idea for energizing new people to get involved, too. And just want to say, Annie, thank you for your report. So many people think that you don't need a library, you need a smaller library now because everyone's reading on, you know, iPads or eBooks or anything. But, you know, we've got a little community member here tonight, Basil, who brought his book to read, too. So, people still are reading books. You can't just put an iPad in everybody's hand and say, "That's all they need." But it's great, there's so many different things you're doing. And we have, within the county, a great Peninsula library system that brings so many different programs across it. But specifically, thank you, Annie, for the ones specifically that you helped bring, and the Friends with providing the funding to keep those programs, especially the literacy programs and the toddler programs and everything, too. So, it's such a well-used library, and it's good to know. I kind of question, we raise the most money, or, excuse me, raise the most canned goods. Does that mean we have the most fines or just we're real generous? But thank you, thank you all for your report.
Yeah, I always look forward to this report. It's so interesting. I hear people in the community occasionally say things like, "Oh, libraries are passe. Nobody goes to the library anymore. Everybody's reading eBooks." Well, take the time one day to go to the library and see how busy it is, all during the day, after school, weekends. The library is very, very busy. Secondly, I had read a couple of eBooks, and then the next one in succession wasn't available on Amazon. And just for fun, I logged on to the library website. I hadn't done it for a long time. The book was in Menlo Park. I ordered on the computer. It showed up in Half Moon Bay like two days later. You pop it and pick it up, keep it, and if you want to extend it, if it's not been ordered, you can extend it again. I mean, it's an amazing service that we have, and the more that they can do online, the easier it makes things. I haven't tried the eBook part yet. I definitely want to do that. But I think we're all committed to finding a solution. We definitely need a new facility in town. It's just how we put the pieces together. But again, thank you all.
Again, thank you for all the work in the library. You know, it used to be a lumberyard there, and now you continue to build, and hopefully we can get some lumber to continue to build that library soon. And from my perspective, 2014, with staff's assistance, maybe we can look at the recommendation of one of us serving on the advisory committee and hopefully move forward in 2014 and get this thing moving forward. I think the mayor had this on his radar screen for quite a while also, I believe. And I can tell you, reading a book in October, if I have to read Spookily the Square Pumpkin one more time without crying, I think I could do it. But it's amazing how many children enjoy sitting and listening to a book being read to them. It's a very special time. And 98% of them are quiet. But thank you, and don't let us get too far away from y'all.
I just want to thank all of you for all the hard work you're doing. I was amazed at how many people are standing at your door before you open. And I was going there a little bit early to bring the ribbons for the pumpkin festival parade contest, and I thought, "Oh, I'll get there early." And there is people already there waiting. So, it's amazing to me how many diverse groups you serve, and I don't think everybody really knows what you're, how many people you are serving. So, the annual report really brings that to light, and so I'm really thankful that you guys are working so hard, and hopefully 2014, we can start this program moving.
So, I have a couple of questions because I'm that guy. So, and I'm not sure of the answers, but I believe previously there used to be multiple libraries on the coast side. Do you know offhand how many?
Yeah, so there was a library at El Granada and then a library in Pescadero as well. So, two other libraries on the coast.
Got it. So, the Half Moon Bay Library now serves the entire coast side.
Yes. I know. If you look at the map, on this big area is the area that we serve. So, 270 square miles.
Wow, thank you. So, here's my comment. Oh, and where did the chairs come from in our library? Where are those from? Do we buy those new, Brandspick and new chairs? Where are those? That's the leading question.
The chairs. Let's see.
Weren't those the throwaway chairs?
Oh, those chairs, yeah. We possibly will be able to get rid of those chairs in a couple of months. Yeah, so that's Millbrae's previous renovation. So, yeah, we did get some bookcases from San Carlos. They just renovated their newer facility, and we ended up with their bookcases a couple of weeks ago.
I'm a big fan of, you know, reuse and recycle. But I'm going to tell you where I'm at on this. And I so appreciate your report. And I've been a participant in activities at the library, including the most controversial, which is the costume judging contest at the pumpkin festival, which is, you know, just fraught with rivalry and competitive nature. And this is truly a community library. And I'll give you an example from my family. We've participated in many events, but my daughter had an interest in teaching a foreign language class and thought that would be something that people would enjoy. And she approached Annie and the folks at the library and folks at the Friends of the library and got support and taught a class to five or six children and helped them learn a new language and get introduced to that language, brought treats from a foreign country for them to enjoy. And that is really a part of our community, really, and that's just one little example of all your examples. I've also been at the library on the weekend and after school, and you completely underplayed it. If somebody were to say, "Have you even asked or observed what goes on at the library?" I'll tell you that I have. I have asked, "Is it the right capacity?" And the answer I got at the county and at our own library is that, "No, it is not the right capacity. It's undercapacity." Have I observed? I've been there myself, and I've seen it just overwhelmed. So, the other thing I want to comment on, and pardon me for being just so blunt, but I'm just tired of going to other communities and going into their facilities and going into their libraries and seeing how they're busy and how there's a lot of action, a lot of activity, and coming back and seeing how ours is undersized. My parents live in a rural community, not surrounded by Silicon Valley, surrounded by crops and lakes in the Midwest, a town of less than 4,000, and their library is bigger and better than our library. Another thing you'll always hear me say is, "I always believe in fighting hard to make sure that people have the tools they need to be successful." And I think having an effective library is one of those key tools. So, with that, I'm going to suggest to the council that we agendize an item so we can have a discussion on this at our next city council meeting to discuss the steps involved in potentially moving forward with a new library facility, how to get there, so we bring that to the public, of the steps involved, with the intention of coming up with a plan and with the intention, and my intention, of trying to get this on the ballot in November. That's my vision, and I'd like to have a meeting, have it on our agenda for the December 17th meeting for discussion. For discussion? I think it's not too soon for discussion.
Are you talking about having a whole plan laid out? I mean--
No, I'm not talking about having a plan laid out. I want to have a discussion about what's the process to get it done? What are the steps in that process? And what steps do we need to take to move forward initially to make it happen?
Okay. I would suggest--
No staff work.
I would suggest a subcommittee of us. I've had discussions with Annie and then, of course, with our county and Marina Spain. And we have talked about some of the things. And one of the things that Hope was, made an inference to, was to have a bond in November. There are a lot of steps to that, but I think, why don't we have a subcommittee of that to bring it back? Because I don't think we could have staff pull that together in the next two weeks. We've got a big agenda end of the year. And already, the city manager has been looking at a project manager. Because the key thing we have to do is to get that plan updated. So, I mean, clearly, we all want this.
I guess, and so I agree with that. And I guess the reason I'm suggesting we have it on the agenda is so we can say, "Let's," and maybe we'd do that now, but we say, "Let's get that plan updated, and what's the process to do that?" So, an adjective that describes me really well is impatient. And I'm sufficiently impatient about this topic because I just don't want it to lag. I also don't want to push at a pace that is not reasonable or smart either. So, I understand that. So, do you think having a subgroup of us step back and prepare some information on how to go about that is the right way to go? Or should we just have an open dialogue about this at our next council meeting?
Mr. Mayor, can I make a suggestion?
I would love a suggestion.
I would suggest that you and Marina form a subcommittee and meet with the Friends of the Library and Annie. I think having all your insight and then having it brought to us, I think it would be more productive, and we have a thorough understanding. Because if we're at a council meeting, we're not going to get a thorough understanding of where they're coming from, where we're coming from, and it's just going to be, you know, talk. I think we really need to look at this. There needs to be some strong dialogue and some strong guidelines, especially if we're going to go for a bond. I don't want to blow it. I just want to make sure that we're well-prepared so when we get there in November, we're going to win that election so we can get the library. So, I think we need to really move, but not so fast that we don't really think about what we want to do. And I think we need to give the library people a chance to meet with council exactly to see what really needs to be done.
As always, your wisdom is appreciated. Thank you. Yeah, no, thank you. So, Marina, would you, are you agreeable to, and is the council agreeable for Marina and I to form that subgroup?
And we can pull, you and I, if we work together, I can commit some time in the next few weeks to do that. I just, I think at this point, for us to discuss, it would be kind of bouncing around like we are now. I think we can get a little further and then bring back, "Here's what we need to do. Here's how long it's going to take." And a lot of that work's already done. We just need to pull it.
Great. So, I'm on board. You guys okay with that? So, I just want to be, I'll push as hard as I can push. My vision, my eyes are on a successful bond measure in November so we can move forward with a new facility appropriate for Half Moon Bay. Our beautiful town nestled, surrounded by Silicon Valley, needs something that's world-class. And with that, I'm going to put on my "If you build it, they will read" button, and I will wear it evermore. And thank you for your presentation.
While you're doing that, you know, we father-in-law's like to pick on our son-in-law a little bit, but for Thanksgiving, our son-in-law's family had their cousins up from Guatemala. And one of their cousins is a professor, a young professor, and she wrote a book, a children's book, on friendship and love and everything, all in Spanish. So, you've got to make me get you a copy of it. It was just so-- It was just so special, that book, and the graphics were amazing, with this wisdom of Al, with Al with big glasses. So I will press my son-in-law, which we love to do, to get this done for me. So, perfect. It's on my list. Get that book for the library.
Great. Thank you. Moving on to mayor's announcement of community activities. I've got two activities to highlight this Friday, which I believe is December 6th, is the Night of Lights, a premier event in downtown Half Moon Bay on Main Street, and with the parade, and judging of floats, and myriad activities. Stores are open, it's just so much fun. I encourage everybody to be there. I would say, come very, very early, eat lunch, and then dinner, and then shop, and then stroll, and then shop some more. And then also, I want to mention the IDES Christmas Dinner, which is at 2:00 on Christmas Day at the IDES Hall. This is a dinner sponsored by the IDES Society and Boys and Girls Club. And this is really a beautiful, remarkable event. It's a luncheon at 2:00, full, traditional Christmas meal for anybody, for seniors, and anybody who doesn't have a place for Christmas dinner. We feed 200, 300 people every year. And the best part to me, well, there's so many good parts, but there's so many volunteers that put this together. But one of the best parts is when Santa Claus comes, and it's, don't tell too many people, he will be there, because his duties will be done at that point, he'll be available. And Santa Claus comes, and then the line of seniors waiting to sit on Santa's lap is just so beautiful. It's 80 people deep, and it's great. So two important events to acknowledge. Are there any other activities I'm missing? No? And with that, we have a report out from closed session, and there was none, and city council reports. And I'll ask Councilmember Fraser, please.
I just enjoyed Thanksgiving with my family.
Great. Councilmember Alafano.
Well, we had a LAFCO meeting on November 20th, and the big item on that agenda was the Granada Sanitary District's application to become a community service district. And it was a very interesting meeting. There were a lot of questions raised, and we've scheduled a special meeting, I think it's for December 18th, to look at it again, because they're very anxious to put this on the, I think it's the June ballot. So there are certain dates that have to happen. So we'll see where this goes on the 18th. On the 21st, we were up in Ocean at Butler Gulf, it was Meet the Legislatures Night, that was interesting. The 21st, on Friday, Don Horstley sponsored a walk on the new Devil's Slide Park. And I have to tell you, it was an eye-opener. When I parked the car on the south end, you make a left turn just before the tunnels, there's a stoplight, and I parked the car, and I started walking, I could see the group. And I thought it was some kind of new road parking lot thing they had built. And all of a sudden, I looked, and I realized, I was walking on Highway 1. And I never realized, until you're standing there, the rocks are like right next to the roadway. It's amazing. So we got up there with the group, and there was maybe 20 of us, Sharice was there, and one of the fellows pointed out a falcon sitting on a rock a few feet away, and they talked about how this was built. They showed a mark, you could see on one of the hillsides, where the railroad used to be, literally just stuck on the hillside. It was an amazing tour. The funniest part was, I don't know if you all remember this, when you've driven over Devil's Slide, but there's like a structure up above, like a radar tower or something, and there's some steps going up, and they go right up the side, and there's no railing. And the steps are probably a foot or two wide. The photographer that was with us, when we turned our back, she walked up the steps, took pictures, and walked down. And we were all like, oh my God, I hope she's going to make it okay. She was young and athletic. But when the park opens, I think they're looking at March or April, it's going to be an amazing park. I mean, the only issue I think is going to be, Pacific is going to have a shuttle to get you up to the park. From the south side, there's limited parking, maybe 15 spaces. So that's the only problem I see, but it's, I think it's going to be an amazing park when it's done. On the 26th, we had our breakfast with Jan, leaving City Hall, and we all wished her goodbye and good luck. And then on Sunday the 1st, we got to listen to everybody talking about mountain lions. So, very interesting time. And I'm very happy that the mayor and Jerry Hill were here to get us some really good publicity. He was on all the news stations later that night.
Great. Thank you, Ellen. And Councilmember Patrick.
I attended the Congestion Management Environmental Quality Committee meeting. Heard a report on the Economic and Housing Opportunities Assessment Phase 2 Study, and then the Grand Boulevard Initiative. We approved the Transportation Alternative Program funding for South Cities Grand Boulevard Complete Streets Project in an amount of $1,991. They have a really great program, and they are also going green on that project, so they did a really good job on it. And we approved the call for projects for CCAG and TA for the shuttle programs. I spoke with Cliff Benz from Brisbane, and he said, Half Moon Bay should try and get shuttles from our downtown to 92 on the other side, and then try and get other shuttles from 92 to get them to work. I'm going, I think it's a great idea, but I'm not sure that anybody would be willing to, you know, start the shuttle like that, because it would be really sporadic. I told, I told him, I think it would be really great. We had some shuttles when the Devil's Slide went out, but that's the only time the shuttles have been really effective. And congestion management has tried to have shuttles here, and people just are so independent, and they want to have their own cars, that it's really hard to get them into the shuttles. I wish we could. It would help the traffic on 92 tremendously, but not going to be able to do, I don't think. Then we heard about an update on the potential stormwater funding. We tried last year with Assemblyman Kevin Mullins, trying to get us the legislation, and since it was not successful, he's going to try again. We really need to get some funding for that stormwater. As John can tell you, that, you know, the amount of money and fines and things that are happening with stormwater, we really need to get some funding for that. And Alan and I interviewed the applicants for the General Plan Advisory Committee, and I just want to thank all the people that applied, and it's a great group of people. It's going to be a difficult job to decide who's going to be on the committee, because we had a lot of good applicants. So I want to thank all those that applied. Also went to the, meet the legislators that Chamber sponsored. And then last night, I went to the Parks and Rec meeting. So it was very interesting. All the women there were there, but the two men were absent. And there was a lot accomplished last night, because it was all women. Right. Sure as odd? Okay. Just joking. Women power. Okay. Thanks.
Thank you, Naomi. Vice Mayor Mueller.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. A little apology for November, I was under the weather most of November, and I'm still a little fuzzy, but we're working on it. I feel like I was riding a bike down the hill, but not like Tony, and, but we're getting better, so we're out and about a little bit more. So also attended the Chamber with Senator Hill and Kevin Mullins, we had some great discussions there. A council of cities, our speaker in the city of Atherton was a county with Peninsula Humane Society, which is a huge, huge financial burden on everyone in Sammentail County. But we don't have much choice, unless everybody wants to gather in pets and boredom, because it is very costly. And someday, we could probably have a report here when we catch up a little bit, because it is a very costly project. And the licensing, we're probably as good as any city, I believe, in Sammentail County with licensing, because a lot of pets are not being licensed. So that was a huge issue. And so continuing on with some good news, and some better news. The mayor and myself met with our auditing team, and our finance team, and our audit will be presented to the city council soon, and everything is in order. Our assets are up wonderful, and everyone's done a good job. And I think we're hearing that wherever we go, actually, within the cities. And this past Sunday, I also attended the ceremony with the Mountain Lions Foundation, and Senator Hill's legislation. And our mayor did a great job presenting there. I think it really brought home a grassroots effort by a number of people in the city of Half Moon Bay, was the focal point of it. So we had some bad press for a while, and I won't go into it, I'll let you comment about it. And the mayor did receive a beautiful photo there that was taken of a mountain lion, and I probably, I was working Sunday, and one of the mountain lion foundations, I didn't tell anybody this yet, but she saw my pins on my hat, and so I did get a mountain lion pin for my hat. So I'll have to brag about that a little bit there. And last night, I attended the swearing-in of the city of Sammentail council members, and it was quite interesting. And they continued to talk about the positives of the peninsula, and what's going on, and infrastructure replacement that they're investing in. And one of the things they continued to comment on was that, if you don't want to be criticized, don't run for public office. So you have to accept that, that you, it's just hard to get that across to your spouses or lovers, that you have to take it, or both, right? And then I know the females were out at the Park and Rec Board, but the male yesterday morning bought breakfast for the president of the Pearlstein Foundation. And he and I had a great discussion of the, excuse me, the past, and the history of their family, of Carl and Virginia Pearlstein, and the good times and the bad times that they had. And I always tell everybody, when Jack and I get together, we laugh and we cry. But he was very pleased, they're very satisfied with the work the council is doing, trying to improve those trails down to the ball fields. We're trying to do a little bit more here and there, and divvy out a little bit more. But he did the best he could with us here on the coast. So yesterday, it was exciting morning for me. I was able to bring $3,000 check to San Resis, which they were just really, I actually had a dentist come off the chair to come out and receive, Derek wasn't available, Dirk? Dirk, sorry. And then the other one gets a little more emotional, was Dr. Josephina, and for Rota Care, and we gave her a check for $5,000. And so she was just thrilled to death. And let me tell you, she had them lined up at the door at that clinic down there, and she does, yeah, Enrique's, yeah. And she does a wonderful job. And she hugged and kissed me more, and I was worried about getting sicker than I already was in the building there. And then I think the best news is for the Friends of Half Moon Bay Park and Rec Foundation, the Pearlstein Foundation has decided to give us a check for all the good work everyone's doing, and more work we have to do for $10,000. So, I think I had a good day yesterday. Breakfast was 30 bucks, and I came home with 18,000.
Wow. So John, you know, pass that over, but thank you. That is exciting news, and great work, and much deserved. And I always look, you know, step back from our reports, and just am astounded by all the other work we do besides the city council work. And this, John, this is just great stuff you're doing for our cities. Thank you. I have a couple items. One, I participated in the Finance Committee meeting with Vice Mayor Mueller, our finance director, our staff, and our auditors, and our audit report will come in clean and solid, which is great, so glad to have that happen. Also participated in the Council of Cities in Atherton, which is where representatives, elected officials from all the cities in Sammentail County, plus county elected officials, get together, socialize a bit, but have a topic and presentation and discussion. And Marina is a key player in this, to put this together, and help bring a presentation to the Council of Cities from the Animal Control Services, provided by the Humane Society. If you don't know it, I'm going to tell you about it. We are, their contract for animal control is coming to an end. It costs a lot of money. And it's time, when all things come to a nexus, a point of transition, to look at the terms of those relationships. And it's time to do that now. And there's, it's a complicated issue, but the takeaway from this presentation were a couple of things. The contract is expected to be about $60 million. And there's a need for a new facility for, I forget what it was, 22 million more. It's a big deal, it's a lot of money. And what I'm going to ask is, on an upcoming council meeting, I'd like us to put a letter together from the council, signed by the council, to the county, copying the city councils for the rest of the county, about our perspective, and what we'd like to see in that new contract. And some of the things discussed at the meeting were performance measures, things like that, and things that make sense in you, when you have a contract. And I think, I'd like to have that discussion. I know us city manager to find a time slot that's appropriate to put that on a future agenda, hopefully soon. And I'd like to have that dialogue early, so we can, so that we can influence the discussion in the front end, as opposed to being on the back end saying, okay, I think every other city has signed this agreement except you. Then what do you do? Right? So I really want to be really clear on the front end, that we have a position for this relationship. We want it to be a good, strong relationship, but it's still a relationship that needs a contract, and I think we should let our position be known.
I agree.
Great. Thank you. And then the last thing I participated in was on Sunday, December 1st, which was an event to announce and recognize the passing of SB 132, which is a law that was put forth and sponsored by Senator Jerry Hill, a friend of our community, which did two things. And this is going to be a little history. A year ago, December 1st last year, Department of Fish and Wildlife shot and killed two mountain lion cubs. And it was a shock to this community, and what, some of my comments at the event were, we can read about it in the paper, but the week up to this, it was the buzz of the community. The children were talking about it, Marina and I were texting each other, where are they now? Are they getting photos? What's going on? And the feedback we got were, oh, they're being monitored, hopefully they'll run off. The next news we got is, they were shot and killed. Next news we got is that they were not 35-pound mountain lions, but they were 13-pound cubs, and they were also malnourished. And so it was very, it was a tragedy. So this, the new bill does two things. And unfortunately, at the time, the best option available to Fish and Wildlife was the option they took. They followed the rules and the policies that they had to operate under. So the new law that, so I supported with Senator Hill, and thankfully it passed, does two things. One, it requires Department of Fish and Wildlife to use non-lethal measures when human life is not threatened. That's a big deal. And the second big deal, and which was shocking, at the time, again, a year ago, they were not authorized to have a discussion with rescue organizations. So if there's a rescue organization there, with a cage, or a dart, or a tranquilizer, they said, oh, we do this all the time, let's talk about how we might help the situation, they were not authorized to have that dialogue, or to get input from them. And now they are. So, that's a big deal. And so I'm really happy it passed. We received a framed photograph of a California mountain lion, and Naomi, I can confirm, because Google told me so, that a cougar, a mountain lion, a panther, a puma, and a catamount are all the same animal.
They are the same animal. They all have their own breed.
Ah, okay. Got it. So, and we are cougars.
Mighty cougars.
And it was especially poignant to have the event in Half Moon Bay, where this occurred a year ago. And I'll let you know that the law goes into effect January 1st, but- And I'll let you know that the law goes into effect January 1st, but the principles are already being adopted. And just a couple of weeks ago, three cubs were rescued in Southern California and released and not killed. So it's working. Thank you. And with that, I'd like to move on to 50 minutes of stuff we do. It's a lot of stuff. So I'd like to move on to organizational excellence.
Thank you, Mayor Qualcheck. This evening, I'm asking Mo Sharma, our city engineer, to come up and give you an update on the Naomi Patrick Trail. And you all know that this is a time when we can give you a little bit of additional information about things that take a lot more time and effort than you may be aware of and that may not normally come to your attention. And this evening, two things that I want to make sure you pay attention to in the presentation is that there's some really great information related to funding of these projects. And all of the credit is due to Mo. You will see that in a minute, but he won't say that part. And then the second part is that I have asked him to add some additional information to try and explain what it takes to actually get these done. There's a great number-
I'm sorry to interrupt you.
Mm-hmm.
I think we missed an item.
We're good.
I apologize. Thank you.
And the items that he's going to go through to tell you what it takes to actually get these trails done are also, each one of them has many steps of themselves, but we won't go into that level of detail tonight. Please just be aware, it does take a lot of effort to do this. So with that, I will turn it over to Mo.
Good evening. I'll just kind of quickly go through the city's efforts to get Naomi Patrick Trail completed. And it's actually excellent example of what city can achieve, you know, if city puts its mind to it as well as the community. So since 2007, the city has constructed approximately three miles of paved trail along Highway 1. This trail currently extends from Seymour to Young Avenue. And we have plans to extend it further south. Actually, the construction has just started and that will extend the trail to Wave Crest. That's about half a mile extension. And to the north, in the next summer, summer of 2014, we will have another quarter mile extension to Roosevelt Avenue. The trail we have complies with the state standards for bicycle and pedestrian trail. It's eight feet wide with the shoulders on both sides. It's ADA accessible means that it's a longitudinal slope, doesn't exceed 5%. And it's relatively, the cross slope is not more than 2%. Also, it's a safe distance away from the highway because it's along the highway. And there are some requirements on those two. The street crossings are, what do they call the safe crossings for good visibility. The total expenditure to date is about $2.85 million. And out of that, we have about $2.25 million worth of grants. So the city's portion is approximately $600,000. Before the trail was built, there were many students, many people, just workers, the farm workers and other people just walked. They had to, they had no option but to walk in the roadway. With the trail now, we have seen a lot more school students using the trail to high school, to the other schools. We also seen people go into shopping center in Straw Flower. There are young kids, now they venture out to get on their bicycle and use the trail and they will become the future bicyclists of Half Moon Bay. And of course, you know, there are people who just use the trail just for their daily exercise. They just walk, evening walk, or the people who visit Half Moon Bay, they use the trail. The extension to Wave Crest, we expect pretty good use of that because many people will just take the trail to the Smithfield. The last slide, we will just go over what it actually takes to get the trails built. To start out with, the city adopted a trail master plan. It's very important to have that master plan coordinated with the regional plan. And then also have it comply with the city's general plan. And that's exactly what the city done. Once we created that master plan, that was adopted in 2009, then you look for the funding for that because just having plan doesn't get the trail built. And we just went the right way, which is try to get some grant monies. And most of these grant monies are on a competitive basis. To give you an example, typically for San Mateo County, the total funds are less than one and a half million dollar in a year. So we did get quite a bit share of that grant money. Once you get the grant, then there is environmental review, there is a design. And after that, coastal development permit, Caltrans permit, because the trail is within the Caltrans right of way. We need their reviews. They review the plans and get the permits. And those permits are not easy to get. You know, the last permit was more than a year just to get the permit from Caltrans. Once you get the permits, then there is of course bid invitation. We review the bids we received, award the contract and execute the contracts, then starts the construction. And during construction, we got to have the biological monitoring, just like, you know, the last trail we built across Frenchman's Creek had extensive biological monitoring. And after we get all of those done, then we ask the granting people that we have complied with your requirements, now reimburse us the money. Typically, they would audit all the records for the trail related. And there are also typically quarterly reports we have to submit to them. So to get that three miles of trail built to date, the city has expended quite a bit of effort, but that effort is well used and a lot of people appreciate what city has achieved.
It's great. It's just the great update and love seeing the progress. I liked seeing the construction started and the next phase of trail. Particularly enjoyed seeing the workers out there on the Friday after Thanksgiving and on the weekend. So that's good. Any comments from the council?
Just a quick one. Thank you, Mo, for all your work that you've done on it. And Naomi, thank you for your continued networking and pushing to get these fundings for this trail. It definitely is well used. And I think this was a good report because people always ask, you know, how come it costs like a million dollars a mile or half a million dollars and why is it so much? But there's so much environmental review, biological testing. It has to conform to certain standards, ADA compliance, and then reviewed by so many agencies. So as we all like to think, we can, you know, just carve a little trail or as we used to have a little footpath and that would work. That doesn't happen today. So that's why it costs so much money and it's so important to get all the grants. So thank you for all your work on this and explaining more of this.
Yeah, again, thanks, Mo. And there's a couple of things. Last night, we had a chair's call of the chairs of the water board and we were talking about grants. And everyone has quite a misunderstanding about grants because it's a very competitive process, but it's all part of government. It's all part of our system. It comes from user fees. It comes from fines and different licensing. So we're all eligible to compete for them. And I think Half Moon Bay's done a wonderful job competing and receiving them. And I will tell you, the Bay Area is probably one of the premier grant areas. I mean, Bay Area hustles for grants, no matter what city or whatever public forum you're in, everyone's out there hustling. But part of this trail process and we looked at the trail users here, it's pretty amazing for the dog walkers also. So they'll be able to walk really and truly all the way from Frenchman's Creek if they're able to make it all the way to Smithfield and hopefully further someday down the coast. And I think the key has taken us a long time and a lot of work and a lot of energy and money by staff, but the Poplar Street Light is just amazing for crossing. It is a lifesaver, in my opinion. And so if you're on the east side of one, you can get over to the trail at least. And north now at Frenchman's Creek. And I know in between, there's some strong emotions and feelings about that, but hopefully in the future, we can address that. But I think between Frenchman's Creek Light and Poplar Street Light and that trail, we've come a long way. And we're all looking at health and fitness and I can see the use of the trails. I think the only other thing I'd be looking at someday down the road here in future would be some kind of waste receptacles along the way without, I know it's impossible, but people are just throwing a lot of garbage and it's just, the trash is a tough one. But thank you, and I think we compete fairly and we've done a good job. And it takes time, but we're getting there. And as you say, day after Thanksgiving, those guys were down there scratching dirt and it'll lead all the way to Smithfield and Cameron's front door, I think.
Yeah, I, none of this would have happened if it wasn't for Mo's grant writing and him diligently working on what our vision was for the trails. For me, the trails, the number one concern for me was the safety of our residents walking to and from and going and seeing people actually being killed on the highway. And so that was one of the things that I really stressed when I went for the grants was that it was a safety issue for the city of Half Moon Bay. We don't get any money for transit and all those kinds of things, but we really need it for the trails. If we're going to have our residents walking on the highway to get from here to there, we need to have a safe path. So, but a lot of credit needs to go to Mo. He diligently worked on those grants. And, you know, we had to do some arm twisting for the other people on the board to vote for Half Moon Bay, but, you know, our grants were so well done and there was a lot of reasoning for it. So we're very fortunate that we got 2 million something bucks for it. So thanks a lot, Mo, because it would have never happened without that.
Thank you. Ellen?
Well, question. I know the issue or the question's been raised, if we could ever get a trail on the east side of one, like from Sea Haven towards Main Street. Is there even room there possibly to do that? Number one and number two, does that kind of have to wait because we already have a trail on the west side till everything else is done? What's the answer to that?
Well, the answer is, of course, you know, number one, that we will need to show the need and compete for that to get the financing. The other thing is that there is not that much right of way on east side of highway. I mean, there, you could build a trail with retaining walls, those kind of arrangements, but also there are some ditches there. So that kind of makes it a little more difficult for environmental review, point of view that there's a potential for habitat on the east side.
Thank you. So great presentation and great progress, particularly the return on investment for the city. And Mo, I want to thank you personally for your investment of time and your skill to help us in this process. You know, getting over $2 million in grants is just really significant and our community benefits because of that.
Well, it all started with the city starting its trail master plan way before I came aboard. So the credit really, the city's credit that everything was in place.
You're too modest. Stop it. Thank you. I'm going to, I ended missing from our agenda, but I'm going to go to our public speakers. And we have one card tonight from Pacific Coast Television. Martin, your comments tonight?
Good evening, Mayor Qualcheck, council and staff. I'll be real brief. Just want to give you a brief update. I wish I was up here talking about all the wonderful things that have been going on, like the pumpkin festival and the devil slide coverage and on and on I could go. But I did want to give you a quick snapshot and I'm also passing around so you can see what's going on with our, dealing with this Comcast live return problem with the audio issues and my recommendation on how we can proceed. And again, very briefly and quickly to review, we've had several instances of the live audio being a problem prior to November 19th. This has not affected the replays. It's not a problem with the recording. It's a problem with the connectivity over the hill at the Comcast headquarters due to infrastructure upgrades. I mean, the good news is, is that the reason that they're explaining that they're having these problems is because they're doing infrastructure upgrades, which means improved and enhanced service to the coast side. Meanwhile, however, it has meant periodic times where we're trying to record and we're trying to go live and you just get no audio. And I understand how maddening that can be. And I understand how angry it can make constituents in the council. With that said, a couple of things, I want to separate out one issue. On November the 19th, which was the last live broadcast, we also had no audio or video. Now PCT contacted Comcast tech who could find no clear reason for it. And following November 26th, we actually came back here to investigate to see what might be happening. And we did discover that there had been a switched throne at the DOC, which as you know, you now have video capability in the DOC. Well, if that switch is thrown, what it does is it bypasses this. That's not something that we could have known or could have foretold, but it in fact appears to be what has happened. So two things, immediately what I'm doing is employing two measures. And I've already talked to your city staff and to your, to your city manager, who's doing a great job, by the way, fielding all this and trying to work with it, is two things. One, we are actually going to have a tech or a person here at 1 o'clock in the afternoon on meeting days. Usually we show up an hour before, but the idea will be, is that that person will be able to flip the switch and really to determine throughout the afternoon if there are any kind of connectivity issues or if connectivity issues arise. The point of that being that if we do have a connectivity issue, then the hope is, is that we'll be able to contact Comcast before they go home at 5 o'clock. The issue has been is that once they go home at 5 o'clock, if we connect up here and we find that we've got a problem, we're having to page somebody, we're having to wait and wait and wait. And that is the reason why we've not been able to have some of the live audio is because we've just had to wait for somebody to get back to their head end and flip that switch. The second thing is because of this November 19th issue is that now we're in contact with city staff so that we have somebody who has a key to that DOC. So if that issue should ever rise again, we can get access to the DOC and we can actually get in there and we can un-bypass what's been bypassed. So those two things are two things that I think should be a fix on an ongoing basis. Comcast has assured us that the audio problem will not be continuing because they're done with their infrastructure upgrades. However, the outside chance that something could happen is still there. And so for that reason, we're going to have somebody here, like I said, 1 o'clock in the afternoon to make sure that we're monitoring that throughout the afternoon and that if there is a problem, we can hopefully jump on it in enough time. So what I would hope and what I would suggest is that with that, we could resume live meetings. This is not being broadcast live tonight per your instruction, but I'd like to, starting with the next meeting, resume the live with that understanding. And if there are any questions, please feel free. I know it's kind of, I'm getting into the weeds with some of the technical stuff, but I wanted you to have the full understanding of what's going on and what we're doing about it.
Well, first of all, thank you for the context and the information behind this. And also thank you for, you know, that you're on top of this and looking at it. So we, you know, we certainly hear from the community when there's no audio, especially no audio, video.
I do too, yeah.
And then, and good, better you than me.
No, no, we get the calls. Believe me, believe me.
But I, so I like what I'm hearing. I like the approach and that you're on top of it and attentive to it. And any other comments from the council?
I was just going to complain.
I was just going to complain, and Martin, thank you very much for staying at this, and if it's not one thing, it's another, and it's unfortunate that the state took away local control from all the cities, because believe me, if we had local control, we could tell them there's not another Infinity or Comcast being installed in a home until you fix this, and we would have it fixed. But the state took over the franchise rights to every city, so we have no leverage. We're not a main corridor city. So if, this has been going on for some time, and it's not one thing, it's another. So Martin, if you, if this continues, let us know, because we definitely need to elevate this to other people, because this is not fair to people that turn it on and it's either, it's really bad, it's almost better to have nothing than to have, you know, no audio being live or you just see mouths moving, because we get those phone calls too, and it's not fair. Yes, you do, you are able to show it at later date, so it's not lost, but the whole feature of this was to have this live so people could watch at home, and so they wouldn't have to sit here all night, they could come and run down here when their item came up. So, just my rant on this once again.
I agree with your rant, and if, you know, we need to escalate this and with some of our friends in higher places, maybe we do that. Thank you, Martin. Thank you.
Thank you.
Our next item is the city manager updates to council.
Thank you, Mayor Walczek. I have three items. The first one is another piece of really good news. The city of Half Moon Bay was successful in a competitive grant process and was awarded $70,000 from the California Ocean Protection Council, and that will be applied towards certain items in our general plan update. So that is going to help us do a much better job in that process, and one of the things we're looking at is all of the associated impacts with climate change, particularly sea level rise. So it's a portion of the general plan update that we needed to address anyway, and this is going to help with that funding, specifically in our local coastal plan, or local coastal program. That's actually going to be a kind of a carved-out section of this whole process. So that's really good news. Also wanted to repeat what we were able to let the community know about last time, and that this Thursday, December the 5th, at 2:00 PM in the afternoon, right next door in the DOC in the police substation, we are having a planning and building process workshop, and there's been a lot of effort that's gone into this. It was prompted by the request from a community member, since we have some new folks working in our planning department, but we also, they have worked very hard to bring in building and fire and water and engineering, all the different groups that touch the permitting process. So this is designed specifically for the heavy users of the process, people whose businesses and livelihoods are somehow connected to the permitting process, and we really hope that frequent users of the process, including realtors and other people and contractors, will come this Thursday, because we are going to be telling not only about the process, but we're going to be showing them what we call cycle times, which are going to be promises about when they will have an answer on their permit, as long as they turn in information by certain dates. We also have a new simplified application form that we'll be going through that we think is a lot easier, we think for people to use, it's more user-friendly, and a variety of things. So again, we really hope people come to that. And then lastly, the third item is we wanted to start alerting the public that for the holidays at the end of December, City Hall will be closed. Will be closed the entire week of December the 23rd with Christmas, and we will be closed a significant portion of the following week into New Year's. People are also using, this was actually a negotiated process, and there's a little bit of cost savings for people using up some of their vacation.
Just a question, it hasn't rained a whole lot yet, but hopefully we will be getting a lot of rain. As our annual preparedness, are we prepared as far as our creeks or rivers, our ditches for anything that happens?
So, we actually have been in a frustrating three-year process to try and obtain a permit to do maintenance on our ditches, and the ditches in town are actually our stormwater drain system, stormwater management system. Many communities have a lot of underground drains and pipes, and it's all very officially managed. Ours are more free-form for the most part, most areas of the community, when you have heavy rains, we have literally some roadside ditches that carry a lot of that flow. And we have been trying for several years to get a permit to be able to do maintenance on those to make sure that we do prevent any flooding from happening. We're still in that process, so we can't do that maintenance right now. We will continue to have crews that can address emergency situations, and there's some limited provisions when we have an emergency situation, but the city attorney and the city engineer and the city planning manager and a variety of other people are all working diligently to try and get that permit.
What, is it one agency or is it multiple agencies for these permits?
It's multiple agencies, and we are also speaking with our elected officials in higher realms in state and federal office about how we might be able to help this process along if we need to do that. Our city attorney can list them all for you if you would like.
Yeah, please.
Well, we met just today with officials of the California Coastal Commission, California Department of Fish and Wildlife, the National Marine Fisheries Service, the U.S. Fish and Wildlife Service, and the Army Corps of Engineers.
The county's a California fish?
Oh, I'm sorry, yeah, California Department of Fish and Wildlife.
There were 19 people at that meeting today.
It was a productive meeting, however.
Did you say productive or non?
I would say it was a productive meeting.
Oh, thank you.
And we very much appreciated our regulatory agencies coming to a meeting in Half Moon Bay to meet with us and talk about some of our concerns.
Thank you very much. And with that, there's a lot going on in our community, and I just want to point out before we move on to our regular calendar items. It's so great that we're struggling with these things and not the things we struggled with three years ago, and I love seeing all the work we're doing and all the progress and activity. As frustrating as the pace can be at times, this is the right stuff to be working on. So with that, move on to the consent agenda. Any discussion or items to pull? If not, I'll entertain a motion.
I'd make a motion, we accept the consent calendar items one through seven, and I don't think I need to read any of them.
Thank you. A motion is a second. Motion is second. All in favor, say aye.
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 Any opposed? Motion carries. And with that, we move on to item number eight, economic development plan.
Thank you, Mayor Walczek. This evening, we have the culmination of another exciting project. So we are going to be asking Mary Bosch to come up and make a presentation. We have been working on an economic development action plan with your approval and as part of the Measure J funds. And Mary Bosch has been working through the chamber to address a variety of issues and has had to listen to many different viewpoints and many different personalities and knit that all together in a comprehensive economic development report, which I congratulate her for. She will be going over a good deal of information rather quickly, however, even that information is just sort of bits and pieces from the comprehensive report that's been in your packet. I have asked her to get through the presentation before you all ask questions, because the main items that we want to focus on are the initiatives. We've asked her to put together a very actionable plan and make sure it's something that in the professional recommendation that they have is something can, will actually have an impact and that we can accomplish. So when she gives her presentation, we will be looking for you to not only approve the plan, but also understand that we would like to bring it back for possibly some further prioritization as part of the budget process if we need to do that. That, I'll turn it over to Mary.
Thank you, and thanks for listening to the highlights of the plan that Marketech, together with Leslie Parks, Economic Development Consultant, prepared. Indeed was a collaborative process, and we had two main aspects to our assignment. One was assessing economic development potential and then getting right to work, mapping out priorities for action. We looked at a wide range of, you know, sort of basic issues and opportunities, and it was one of the key fundamentals that a major goal for the community is to work toward retaining more of the commuters that are leaving, the residents leaving the community every day to go to jobs and to keep them in Half Moon Bay. So that's an overarching goal for this plan. Our tasks were myriad, primary and secondary research, community-based interviews with over 30 people, complemented by a survey of commuters in the community that the Chamber of Commerce sponsored, and of course, building on all the good work that's gone before this, as well as lots of back-and-forth conversation when we got down to ranking initiatives and mapping out a game plan. It was immediately clear to us that one of the goals of this work was to emphasize actions that could have an impact on the bottom line in the community. So paying attention to the economic development contribution through TOT, property tax and sales tax, was important recognition to what's already going on in the community. So our focus looked at three main sectors, the retail sector and downtown, together with the visitor industry and the basic industry perspective, and we took a look at assessing each of these in terms of how Half Moon Bay competes today, and also listening to what your business community and local leaders had to say. Of course, I just want to recognize that their voice is embedded in this action plan, and we heard of many challenges. These are some of the themes. There are also a long list of opportunities and bold ideas. You have a very thoughtful and engaged community, as you're well aware, but also those high educations came through loud and clear, and some of the big ideas that were shared, and it was our job to kind of pare those down to what's actionable and what will have an impact in the short term in working through staff and community. So just quickly, to let you know, we did sort of have a methodical process. We had a variety of factors that relate to how retail is developed and attracted that we evaluated, and using, just next slide, using a rating system that, you know, just helped us assess where the strengths and where some of the challenges were to work on, and we did the same with the visitor industry, looking at competitive factors, how's Half Moon Bay faring, and did this also with basic industry, in looking at those factors that have the greatest impact on decision-making for companies that are looking for a location for their business or may already be in the community. Taking all this information together was a bit of an eye-opener, I think, in our working group, and we had some terrific dialogue about what it would take to begin to move toward significant, I would say, economic restructuring, as well as what the natural assets are of the community that could be built upon and leveraged to have impacts in terms of revenue to the city, and also capitalizing on capacity, for example, of the visitor industry that's already here that doesn't require additional investment. So the plan very much was an asset-based plan. Next slide, please. And I want you to understand that these initiatives are meant to be building blocks. It really does feel that we're sort of at the start of a much longer-term process. We had to always screen through the perspective of there will be a half-time economic development staff person managing and really working through the initiatives. So where are the pieces in this economic development puzzle, where results can be tracked, measured, and progress can be made over a two-year period of time, which is the commitment at this stage, as I understand, for funding this position. So just a reminder of the organization structure, the economic development position will be housed at the Chamber of Commerce. Of course, there will be direct collaboration with the city, and the initiatives, though, will fall under the responsibility of that economic development staff member. And it is anticipated that part of the role of this individual or individuals, as it may be, in terms of implementing these initiatives, will be connecting to the many terrific resources that you have in the region that are already hard at work on many of the same issues. So I'd like to just move through the six initiatives that you see in your packets, and then pause at the end of this presentation for discussion and questions. With each initiative, we've outlined sort of action steps for immediate progress and measures, and also identified other actions that could be taken if there was more resources, if there were more, you know, more time, more capacity to address some of the other opportunities that were identified through this process. I also want you to note that in virtually all of these initiatives, except one, and that is the initiative related to, excuse me, two initiatives, four and six, the Internet Access Initiative and improving the permitting process. It's assumed that the chamber would be taking the lead for the majority of these initiatives. And this first one is really sort of a building block initiative. It's organizing the economic development infrastructure, and it reflects the strong interest and advocacy of many of the people we met through this process in focusing on economic vitality issues in this community. So it's the recommendation here through this initiative that there be a small ad hoc group of champions for this plan, that would be volunteers, that would help build bridges with the community and reflect the importance and the focus of this plan. And there are other elements related to sort of building the infrastructure, website improvements that need to be addressed, creating benchmarks, of course, measuring the progress, and naturally, on a regular basis, stepping back and reflecting on how are we doing, are these, do these remain the right action steps to get us toward the goals that we're working to accomplish. That is budgeted for about 5% of the staff person's time, and so this should be creating a system in the first year that will be with you going forward. Initiative two focuses on the primary action item for this work program, and that is increasing hotel occupancies, and you'll like that measurable there. I thought it was, this came from conversations and from chamber and business leadership, to increase hotel occupancies to 80%, which would be a significant increase in TOT tax, which we have not calculated, but I think it would be a good subtask here. Most of the specifics under this initiative are kind of down and dirty on how to do that, and I would like to mention here that this is not simply a blanket outreach to the visitor market, but this initiative is very focused on building more activity around the meeting market and the business, the Silicon Valley business community, particularly to increase occupancies during the week. But I think there's a couple of added benefits with this initiative that would also increase exposure of the business community to the assets of Half Moon Bay, which could have long-term benefits certainly related to growing the small business base. The third initiative is what I call a bread and butter initiative of any economic development project. program, and that is focusing on the businesses that have already invested here as your primary asset for growth. It's been well documented by economic development programs that 75% to 80% of job growth comes from businesses that are already in existence, and this initiative really emphasizes the importance of connecting to the companies that are here, paying attention to their needs, responding and encouraging opportunities, making connections, and working to be assured that there are no more surprises when a major employer announces a change in their status. This, by the way, looks like a 20% amount of time, 200 hours a year. That could be a greater amount, and it could be a smaller amount depending on partnerships that are developed through the course of this work to do problem-solving, troubleshooting, and in general, respond to the needs of business. But this is an important pillar in your program. The fourth initiative works on another key infrastructure issue, and that, I think, relates to one you've already heard this evening around technology access and capacity in this community. While this is a longer-term issue to resolve, that is, high-speed internet capacity, it was also deemed as a critically important one for the long-term goal of increasing more tech-based companies and practitioners in the community, as it shows up across the board with basic industry as a critical location requirement. This would be one of the initiatives that would be led by the city, but in partnership with the Chamber. We don't anticipate it to take a significant amount of time, but depending on revelations and discoveries through this process, it could lead to some very interesting other subtasks and a lot of work. Initiative five is one of the more creative initiatives that, around building on another critical cluster and asset in the community, and that is the agriculture and culinary industry. And it also aims not only to increase sales to existing business, but to provide recognition to Half Moon Bay and a brand around the culinary tourism assets that are here, and once again, increase TOT tax by a series of events that would take place that would bring not only your local community together and coastside residents to participate in farm-to-furic events, for example, but also bring folks from over the hill to spend more time throughout the year in enjoying the long weekend in Half Moon Bay and increasing hotel occupancies. This would take, by the way, that initiative is one that, there's also some, not only is it a creative initiative, but there could be some creative thinking about the right person for that skill set, as a lot of it is related to public relations and events. The last initiative relates to one that you are already well on the way in making change, and that is ensuring the permitting process is streamlined and predictable. I have to say that this addresses probably the most significant issue or concern of the business community, and you have a remarkable 50-point game plan that you're moving through, which is highly applaudable. But we also discovered there will be plenty of opportunity to partner with the Chamber and the business community on rebuilding the credibility of the city that change is actually occurring. So I think embedded in this initiative is also a lot of public relations outreach, building testimonials, case studies, and thinking about the need to reverse the perceptions of reputation that the city has over a long period of time, as it'll take more than the delivery of, you know, your 50-point checklist to impact kind of built-up images and perceptions that the city's developed over time. So there's lots of opportunity here for enhancing what's already been laid in terms of the game plan that you have. So I will pause here and ask for questions. If you're adding up the numbers in the percentages of time for this half-time person, we've left a little wiggle room here for other things that inevitably will arise. So there's about a 93% total time documented through this work plan. I want to say this is, again, a very pragmatic work program, as you can see in the details of the tasks. It's also relatively ambitious and will demand focus, and perhaps more, a wider variety of skills than one individual may bring to the job. So one of the thoughts and discussions occurring now is, you know, that there might be some pieces of the program that would be, you know, augmented, certain existing positions or individuals, more than one individual may get involved in the implementation, simply because the demands of the jobs are fairly varied, although I will say the theme, I think, is sales and marketing and great communication.
Great. Thank you very much for your presentation and for your work in the meetings and facilitating and gathering information, data, and presenting that back to us. Much appreciated. Comments from the council? Questions?
Thank you. I can't say I'm surprised by any of this, but it's good to see a lot of this information highly detailed, I think, or I believe there's a lot of buckets here in where do you start. Some of it clearly is internal, which we've identified a lot of things, others are external. Just in looking through some of this, I was kind of concerned about education, and that is to current businesses, existing businesses, and ones coming in. And maybe you've hinted it in the initiative number three, and I'm thinking of the number in here. So we commonly toss around 80% of us work over the hill every day, and you've got 78%. So we're there. And we do have a lot of businesses that shut at 5:00, they shut at 6:00. So here's some real data that no one is here, that lives here during the day, and there's opportunities. So things like that to truly educate existing businesses, but more importantly, is many businesses open without a business plan? I mean, you can make the best burger in the world, but how many burgers are you going to have to sell? That's all you're selling, per hour, every day consistently. And I think so many people, they have these great intentions and they want to open a business, and I applaud them to do that. You know, the Chamber offers some programs, they're a small business, but what is it that we can truly do when these businesses, they open for six months or seven months, and then unfortunately, they disband? And I'm curious, how many of them truly had a business plan to start to sell that? So I think there's a huge education piece for existing businesses and businesses coming in that we really have to promote, as well as many others that are in this. So did you touch on this? Did you see that as something?
Pardon me. That's an inevitable truism for any community. And I think that one of the approaches to addressing technical assistance and training is through business retention and expansion, and identifying a common set of issues or needs that could be addressed through education, as well as maybe doing a better job of connecting to the resources that are out there already to serve the small business community, which are frankly quite abundant. And, you know, it was just interesting hearing the other presentations this evening. You had, you know, 19 federal agencies at your doorstep. Well, I bet that was because somebody asked and organized it and said, hey, we need your help. And perhaps that hasn't been done yet with all the groups and organizations that are already focused on small business development, that if you become a squeaky wheel, you get them to pay attention and provide the services here. So I think what we're urging is, don't reinvent the wheel, but find opportunities to partner with the many great players that are already out there, whose mission it is to help startup companies and help businesses grow.
Other comments? Ellen?
Mary, again, thank you. I changed the order of things a little bit. The initiatives I like the best is number two, because that has the biggest return on investment for our community. Not only from the hotel tax, but when people come and stay in a hotel, they certainly do other things in town and spend more money. So to me, that clearly should be our number-one initiative. And the good thing about that is we already have the Hotel BID, the Hotel Business Improvement Group, who already exists. We just need to be able to communicate with them and find out what can we all do to improve their occupancy. That's kind of a no-brainer. Number four, this is the chicken and the egg. We've talked about this. You know, you've got firms, we've had GoPro here, we've got other firms we want to bring over here, but you've got to have pipes big enough to give them the internet capability that they require, and every day that goes by, they need more. I think I read San Leandro faced the same kind of an issue, and the problem they were finding was they couldn't get the providers to come in and do it because they were waiting for the demand. So San Leandro, and I think it was San Leandro, finally said, fine, we'll go do it. They dug up the streets and they put in fiber or whatever, and then the demand showed up, and they got a payback. It was, I think they turned it into possibly a separate, what am I trying to say, like an agency?
Enterprise fund.
Yeah, like assessment district. But clearly, we're not going to attract firms that need high-speed internet and expect them to go chase it down. We're going to have to really get active with this, figure out where it belongs first, maybe even phase it in so that it's there when people need it. And the last initiative was number three. You know, part of the issue we have in the town, we've got the Hotel BID, we have nothing for the other businesses in town. They have no real organization, other than really the Chamber. We've tried to form a downtown BID, and it just never worked. And maybe this is the way that we approach these other businesses, is begin, have to have these conversations with these top employers in town, find out what's on their mind, and maybe we can eventually lead them to some kind of an organization, whether it's part of the Chamber or it's separate, and they can provide us with information, what's on their mind, what is it they need that we can help them to do even better. But a good report overall.
Well, thank you. And retention and expansion is a goldmine in terms of, if you tackle this initiative and make a commitment to spending time getting face-to-face with the businesses that are here, it's a goldmine in terms of the results that you will gain, not only by learning about what that business is facing, but by being able to help them with the simplest of issues and make connections to other businesses. And the value to them of having someone care enough, having the city care enough to listen and to pay attention and provide a little kudos and recognition and respond is immeasurable. I've seen it happen in so many places, so I'm really hopeful that doesn't fall off the map.
Great, thank you. Other comments?
Yeah, a couple of comments and suggestions. Number one, I think we have to be very careful that people don't expect government to make their business successful, and that's my personal opinion. I mean, we have to work together to provide the infrastructure, the safety of the community, and the needs of the business community. But I can't go in as an elected official and make their business successful. They have to make it successful in a partnership with the community, and I think that's very important. And try to bring independent business people together is, it's almost like trying to bring agricultural commodity trade groups together. There's 350 of them, and boy, they all are worried about their own little empires, whether it's almonds or cows or rice or whatever. And on initiative two, you know, I think we have to put in golf in there also. We're leaving that out. The golf course this year just was hitting home runs because of weather, weather, weather. They never lost a rainy day in 11 months, and I mean, that's great and horrible. So you have to look for the unexpected, and it's the same thing that happened in October for all of our farm businesses also. It was weather, weather, weather. And the restaurants, I mean, we can talk about traffic jams in the Bay Area. Trust me, there's traffic jams throughout the whole Bay Area. How do we get the infrastructure here? And we're not going to add another lane to bring them here. But the key is, when we get them here, our ocean is so valuable to us. How do we keep that ocean in the forefront of people coming to the ocean but then staying on Main Street for a while, too? Whether it's signage or something, I see it constantly, they go to the beach and they go home, you know? So those are just a couple of other things. And when we're talking about infrastructure, we have to be realistic with each other. We just don't have facilities to build big industrial parks. It's, trust me, it's not going to happen. We better all live a long time. That's not our, in my opinion, our base. We can do the smaller businesses, it's fine, but we're not going to be building big office complexes like they're trying to build, and they're actually tearing down, excuse me, tearing down properties to build new facilities. So I think we have to be careful there. If you look at San Leandro, and I go up 880 to my board meetings, on the West Side, they've torn down a lot of, there was a huge Lucky complex over there, there was Kaiser Hospitals going in there. You know, they're tearing down old properties that were commercial properties and upgrading them there. So that was a couple of things there. And initiative five, again, I think has got some great potential, and with all respect to the Chamber and to Sharice, I think we need to refresh the Tour de Flore name and come up with a better concept of how do we keep those people over here on the farm and maybe provide a lunch the same time at the farm and not a box lunch? And, okay, so...
She already thought of that as one of the...
I want it on the record, and I think we do need to refresh the name, because you're visiting goats and you're visiting cows and you're visiting a couple flower plants. Tour de goats, yeah. But, you know, I'm always amazed when you visit with Dee Harley at Harley Farms, and she talks about people paying to go have lunch with goat poo in the field, you know what I mean? That's pretty amazing stuff, so that always stuck in my mind. So we have a lot more enjoyable spots along with hers to visit. So I think initiative five could use a little bit of streamlining there. And when we're talking about our initiative six, I think we're having a meeting this week regarding that, we're all working to try to streamline this process, and Marina and Naomi have lived careers of signage in this community, you know? And so those are things that, again, I think we all agree that when you're dealing with businesses on the coast, anything we do, it's a very long, drawn-out process. It just doesn't happen overnight. I did an interview with Stanford students this morning on the phone, and they're all want to be farmers, it's great, you know, but you do have to have property and you do have to have water, and you do have to have a market. And it's the same thing, they're thinking, oh, man, we all want to graduate and be farmers. That's great, but, and you have to get, and we're all talking sustainability, I'm getting off the little subject here, but sustainability for you and me and small businesses in town, sustainability's in my wallet, trust me. How in the heck are we going to be able to sustain our business by the product we're selling, as simple as that? And that's where I think we need to stress our sustainability, but we have to stress, how do we succeed in business? You've got to stick and stay, you've got to be open. I'm going to Farmers Market in Pacifica tomorrow, it's going to be freezing. Do I want to go? No, but you've got to go. No, but you've got to go. So that's my little spiel on, on this process. But I think it's a beginning, and it shows that the city is willing to step up and, and spend some money that you all pushed for, we all pushed for, to move forward in cooperation with the Chamber. So I, I think we're off to a, a start, but it's a slow start.
Thank you, John. And Councilmember Petrit, any comments to share?
I have a lot to say, but I'm not going to say it all. I, I agree a lot with what John said. For me, seeing Half Moon Bay grow from 1950s to now, it's totally different. For me, if I could do it, I would bring Half Moon Bay back to the old way downtown was, where it was community, and it was, you had your markets, you had your small things, and... But you know, with progress, it changes. So I have a hard time, and I will admit this on television, that I have a hard time when it comes to economic development, development in Half Moon Bay. And basically because I, I get very frustrated in that what John said, that I totally believe too, that businesses and people in our business community cannot expect the City Council, the City of Half Moon Bay, to sustain their businesses. And, and a lot of times when things happen, it's like, we want the City Council to pay for this, pay for that, pay for this. And I, I have a really hard time doing that. We have five different shopping centers, and it's, you know, it's always about certain areas want this, and other places don't get things. So I, I just think that we need to make sure that everybody's involved and everybody's part of this economic development. It's not just downtown, and it's just not, you know, just certain areas. We have a lot of different shopping centers. We have a lot of people that are outside of our city, on the border, not, and when you look at the further south on Main Street, I mean, so, and you look down by where Cameron's is, and where other places are, we need to make sure that we're really advertising, we're helping everybody. So for me, it's like, how do we do that? And I'm not sure how we do it, because my goals are totally different than some of the people up here, as far as economic development. And I said that, Mary, in the meeting, when, what I had with you. My idea of economic development is probably a little bit different from everybody else's. I'm from the old school. You know, you work hard, you do it, and that's how you do it. So, but I really think, I agree with Ellen, I think number two, the hotel occupancy really is one of the things that we have and we brought forward, that we need to continue to do. I mean, it's what's making our city survive. I think number five, I think is a great creative thing, that I think, that would make our, our community different from other communities, with the ag tourism and those kind of things. We have to do something more creative, because we are visitor-serving. And we have to think about, how do we get people here, not just go through our town, jam Highway 92, and not stop and buy? We need to get them to get out of their cars and, and buy, and go downtown to our Main Streets, or go to the beach, or go wherever. So I, I think that's really, really important. And as far as business retention, I think the businesses that we have here have been really great, but the problem is, they do become really great, and they leave us, because we don't have any other place for them to grow. And I, and I just don't think we're going to have the facilities to let them grow. We don't have that space, we don't have an industrial park, or we don't have a place where people can go. If there is, the only place that they can go is north, in the Princeton area. And then you think about what that area looks like, it really needs to be cleaned up, if people want to go there for businesses. But as far as Half Moon Bay, you know, we really don't have a lot of ways of expanding, which is too bad. We just lost a great company in GoPro. You know, it was environmentally, you know, clean, and it was creative, it was really something that was really great. So I, I have a real hard time with economic development, as far as what we can do and how we can improve it. People have to be willing to listen and to work together. I guess that's my biggest complaint, is how do we get everybody to listen and to work together? It's a challenge. And whoever we get to do this, I think really is going to have to be somebody that's really going to be able to work with a lot of different ideas, and a lot of different things that are going on here, because we're very independent and very creative, and everybody wants to do it their way. Right?
I just want to do it my way, actually. I don't know about those other people. Thank you. So Naomi, I want to say I really appreciate your comments, particularly, I know we're not always on the same page on this topic, but I absolutely see where you're coming from, and I respect your, your opinion on this. My comments are these, and, and pretty much in line with everything we're hearing tonight, that, that I don't see our role as, and I think this is reflected here, I don't see our role as telling people how to run their business, that is not our business. I think our role is to create the fabric upon which a beautiful painting can happen, and it's the frame, the fabric, and we're not the paint. Or the painter. So I also wanted to comment, we always, we always reference GoPro. And before GoPro, it was Dorado Software, and there's also Edwala. And it's all, it's actually fine, that, because I think our role as a community doesn't have to be the place where a company comes and stays for 40 years. Our role could be the place where, it's a great place to, to get started, and maybe you'll be there 10 years, maybe five, maybe 15. And that's okay, because there's, the change can be uncomfortable, but it's not necessarily bad. So now we're in the midst of change, and it's a little uncomfortable, but it's a, it's a, a good thing for the company, for GoPro to move on to, because they've had great success, and look forward to having the next great success in our town. So my, I appreciate your work on this. My, my comments, I like all the initiatives, but a couple of comments. One, I looked at the budgets, and they sure seem very small. In particular, initiative two, the, mentions a promotion plan, and with a budget of $15,000, does your promotion, does that, is that $15,000 for the promotions?
A lot of it is tied to marketing materials, and assumed that most of that will be electronic, so the costs will stay down. And if you look at the, the action steps, many of them are, they're labor-intensive, but not promotion material-intensive. And I would agree with you, it's a conservative budget.
Okay, I would say conservative is, is optimistic. My opinion is that the, the budgets are, listed here are too small. The other thing I wanted to share is, some of the items, while I agree with them as we explain them, I find one, not in all the items, but in some of the items, one shortcoming. And not, not, again, no difference with what I'm hearing from, from the council, but I look at each item and I say, what's the outcome? And in some cases, it's very clear. Move hotel occupancy from 67 to 80, to 80 percent. So if I'm coming in as the project manager in that, in that position, I know what I have to do. I look at some of the other ones, it's, it's not as clear to me. And that's, that's something that I think, if it was very specific, that the outcome or the expectation is this specific thing, I think that, for an example, let me think of initiative number four, work with internet provider to improve access. To what end, right? So it's, so I, I would like to see the specifics reflect the outcome, because then I think we can get traction faster.
We have some examples in the appendix, but we could add more to initiative by initiative. I think there could be more, and I'd be happy to do that.
Great. And, but overall, I, I think these are the right things. And when we talked about approving the economic development plan early on, I actually was a reluctant supporter, probably didn't know that, because I, I was really leaning much more strongly toward a, a marketing plan, a promotion plan. And, and I, I've come, I've come around, and, because I think this reflects both. I think the idea of, of counterbal, we have an amazing fall season in Half Moon Bay. It's just amazing, and I think this year's Pumpkin Festival was the best yet. And I'm not just saying that because of certain people in the room, but I am saying that. But it's just wildly successful, and I think the initiative to counterbalance that, and we're, we're known for that, that's locked in, then that's that part of the year. To counterbalance that with something else, and the other part of, parts of the year, again, setting a specific outcome, like, hold a pilot event in 2014, whatever those are, I think that's, would be really valuable. So I support these things, and I'd like there to be clarity on the outcomes, expectations from each initiative, but I think it's good work, and I think it's the right thing to do. I think the budgets are too small, so as, as we have resources available, I'd like to just, I'm going to lobby, that we're aware that this is, that this is happening, and we do our budgets, we should also look at this. So with that, comments?
Yeah, thank you, Mr. Mayor. Just, I want to share with you a couple of things, with our Council of Cities, we get together with Menlo Park, and they have Facebook. Well, trust me, you know, we're all talking about these wonderful things. It's not that great. It, it does cause more congestion, it causes more parking issues, and more whatevers. And my fellow board members, a City Council member of City of Mountain View, and oh, the whole world, we love Google, we love Google, but I love Apple. But anyway, Google's not the greatest tenant in their city either, because they expect more, and they want more, and they demand more. So we have to be realistic on what we can get done. And I think this is a beginning that shows that the city is committed to work with the business community through the Chamber of Commerce, and I think that's the thing that we have to share with our community and our business people that look at. You know, we realize how important you are to our community, we're going to do as much as we can, and it looks like our recommendation would be, and if I may, approve the Economic Development Action Plan, and direct staff to bring the report back during the budget process for priorit, prioritization, prioritization. And I think I'd be willing to make that motion, but again, we're not going to give you the whole cow, you know what I mean? We might give you a, a little flank steak, or a steak, or something along the way, but I don't think we could provide the whole, whole cow. But, so I would like to make that motion at this time to...
So with that motion on the table, Vice Mayor Mueller, there were some comments tonight that, mine and others, that may, let's see reflected in the motion. One, that each of the initiatives be updated to include a specific objective. And then, I don't know if there were any other comments you want to add to the motion? Anything else?
Well, I think we could summarize some of the initiatives, initiatives, too. To me, it seems like there, there's a lot in there, and they might be able to summarize some of the initiatives, initiatives, to make them streamlined, to be a little more effective.
Got it. So, so can we amend the, amend the motion to include a summary of the initiatives and a specific objective for the initiatives? Is that acceptable?
Yeah, we need a second, though.
Second?
Then I would be in agreement.
Question. Okay, we need to look at the initiatives carefully, guys, before we just say that, because we need to make sure that there are ways of measuring, because some, so I really need to have you clarify that. What do you mean by having some...
So we were, Sharice and I were just conferring, because some of them, to this point, some, some of the initiatives, for example, the internet access one, you know, to say that you're not going to have an outcome, you know, in two years, that we're going to have excess capacity improvements, but, and there might be steps along the way, so that within six months, you've identified key, an outcome would be identifying key issues, and exploring with other case studies from coastside communities, because coastal communities there are, alternative approaches to improving capacity. So if you're comfortable that some of the outcomes will be deliverables, and not, you know, it's great to have a TOT measurable, like you do in that particular initiative, but many of them won't be quite that tangible, and yet, the outcomes will be measured progress toward, towards...
That's, that's what I'm after.
Very good.
Because I love cookies, but not cookie cutters, so it's not always the same answer.
Exactly.
So the, the, you're spot on. It's ways to track progress, ways to have traction towards something specific. In one case, it's, it's a number, and we can make, we can measure, other cases, it's, it's, there's 10 steps we want to take, and maybe we'll take one of them next year, and we know we've taken that step. It's, that's, that way, when a person's on board, they know what their responsibilities are, and that we're, we're all aligned with that.
Yeah, that's clear, because when you first said it, it was, didn't make sense to me, because you wanted measurable, but some of these can't be measurable. I mean, there are steps of how to get there.
Trackable.
Trackable. Yeah, very, much better language. That was good Japanese, thank you.
Thank you. So with that, I have a motion in a second for the discussion. I'd like to have a roll call vote, please. Do you want to add anything, Sharice? I'm sorry? Because you're about, because you're about to get a motion that's probably going to pass, so think carefully.
Yeah, no, besides that, I'm, I'm sick, so you've never seen me with this low energy, I'm sure. That would, that would be interesting. Go ahead.
Thank you. Poor Sharice. So we have a motion in a second. Roll call vote, please.
Councilmember Patrick?
Yes.
Councilmember Fraser?
Yes.
Councilmember...
Yes.
Vice Mayor Mueller?
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Motion passes unanimously. Thank you for your hard work. And Sharice, thank you for your hard work as well, and I hope you feel better. So we have one more item. So even though John is anxious to leave, moving on to item number nine, which I believe is a misprint in our current agenda, so...
The title was substantial, was an initial title, and the correct title is on your staff report, the Cabrillo Highway Properties Update.
Great, turn it over to you. Thank you.
Great. So just wanted to provide an interview and an update on the progress that we've made with the Cabrillo Highway Properties. These are two different parcels that the city owns on the east side of Highway 1 and north of 92, and combined, it's actually almost 37 acres of undeveloped land. So I know that the council sees this as a key item in our blueprint for long-term fiscal sustainability. A number of actions have been taken over the past couple of years. The council adopted a property management plan. We're making sure that we're protecting the property, and that we are starting to plan for the disposition or use of that property. We have done an updated wetland study, we have put in fencing, we have done annual weed abatement for several years now, and we also are in the process of looking at how we will continue to implement the strategic plan that you all adopted last year, and you all identified this as a priority level A project in that strategic plan. Therefore, we will be coming back to you to develop a specific detailed work plan about the specific steps in looking at the vision for that property, and maximizing potential value, and having it really be a true community asset. We will be bringing that plan to you for adoption, and just as a sort of precursor or highlight, we are going to be recommending that it has a significant amount of public input into that process. So with that, I'm happy to answer any questions, and so is the city attorney.
So I want to say thank you for an update on the Cabrillo properties. It's just, there are so many things going on, and City Hall is super busy, and this is just another major initiative that we have to deal with, our staff has to deal with. And I'm happy that there's activity moving forward, and it's going to come before us again. I know it's important to all of us. So, so thank you for the update and the progress report. Any other comments?
Quick question for Tony. A quick question for Tony. I was approached by a constituent the other day regarding the invasive species, the greasewood. So is that in a delineated possible wetland area where we can't knock that greasewood down or coyote brush or whatever you guys want to call it? But that's brush and they do spread.
I'm not familiar with the term greasewood. I am aware, is it the same thing as the coyote brush?
Yeah.
The San La Coria guys call it greasewood.
There is probably coyote brush in the, in the proximity of the wetland areas. One thing that we've done is that we've limited the weed abatement activities on the site to areas that aren't within 100 feet of the wetlands as a precautionary measure. As you know, one of the very significant issues in the, in the Beechwood litigation was the presence of wetlands, but also the assumption that any development there would be constrained by 100-foot buffers around the wetlands. To avoid any issues with permitting or Coastal Commission, we've, we've elected not to go within those areas. But the issue of the 100-foot buffer is one that I've analyzed very carefully and I think there's a good argument to be made that, that that is not a constraint to future development there. So, so yes, I'm sure there is coyote brush within that 100-foot area and that would be avoided during the weed abatement activities. Outside of that, however, it's fair game.
Excellent. Thank you very much, Tony. And thank you, Laura. Other comments? With that, close to its speed. Thank you very much, everybody.